I would like to call this meeting of the Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier is absent. Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook is absent. Councilwoman Templeton, here. Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
Councilman Dennis.
Here. We do have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bill's total one million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Correspondent, twenty correspondents, twenty twenty-five general municipal election results.
So for Councilman Ward One, we had David E. Boyer with a hundred and nine votes, John Weiss with fifty-six votes. Councilman Ward Two, we had Stacy Templeton with ninety-one votes, Alan McCarthy with seventy-two votes, and Malachi Dukes with nineteen votes. Councilman Ward Three, we had Tim Bennett with eighty-two votes, Kevin Dennis with a hundred and eighty-three votes. Councilman Ward Four, Michael Cook with two hundred and four votes, and Luke Adams with a hundred and one votes.
Motion to accept. I will entertain a motion to accept the election results.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. We have accepted the election results. I will entertain a motion to adjourn signee die.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. We are adjourned, signee die, swearing in of newly elected officials.
Are you want to raise your right hand? Repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications for the office of city council as prescribed by law that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class and the ordinance of the city of Festus and faithfully demean myself in office. So help me God. Perfect.
Congratulations. Our next order of business is to elect a mayor pro temp.
So I'd like to suggest Dave Boyer.
I'd like to nominate Stacy Templeton.
Right, sir. Which one are you seconding?
We have a motion and a second for Stacy Templeton.
Roll call that one.
Yes, we have a motion and a second for Stacy Templeton.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
No.
Councilwoman Templeton.
I'm going to vote for Dave. You can also say no or abstain. I'll say no.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
No.
There is a motion. That fails, yes. There's a motion for
For Dave Boyer, and I need a second. Motion has been made and seconded for Dave Boyer for mayor pro temp. Roll call, please.
Who made the motion? Was it? Okay, that's my thought. Councilman Vins. Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
No.
Yeah.
Yes.
The motion passes. Councilman Boyer, you are now mayor pro temp. Congratulations. I will entertain a motion to reconvene the regular meeting of this council. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. We are back in council meeting. Remarks of visitors. Michael Chelly.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about the proposed police firing range. First, I just wanted to say that I support the police and I understand their need to train specifically to maintain post the peace officer standards and training requirements, uh, which includes their firearms qualification. My understanding is that this range is proposed as an alternative to the De Soto range, which the officers have been using. What does this range offer that the De Soto range does not or cannot provide? I wonder about the cost benefit analysis of building an entire range for our police department. If they're only going to use it a few times a year, couldn't they simply get an annual membership at a much lower rate than the cost of constructing an entire range? Unless the city plans to use the range for other departments in the future, as Hillsborough has done near Rain Tree, which has also caused problems in that neighborhood. The proposed range is less than a thousand feet from neighborhoods and Crichts Park. The average audible range for a pistol is a mile plus, and the shotgun and rifle is two plus miles. All three of these firearms will be used at this range, uh, putting all these areas and many neighborhoods beyond the proposed diagram of this range well within range for that noise. Additionally, what are Festus' plans for an environmental impact study or a surface danger zone assessment on the surrounding area to determine the kind of impact the gun range will have? These kinds of studies need to be considered in the development of a project such as this. The proposed location is near multiple ponds, the Joakim, and a wetlands reclamation area, all of which could be negatively impacted by the range. Additionally, firearms obviously produce projectiles, but also ricochet, even with the berm and surrounding trees. Such an assessment would determine the total confinement of hazardous fragments, debris, and ricochet. A nine-millimeter ricochet can travel up to six hundred yards. That's well within the distance of the range to the neighborhoods and the park. There are other ranges Festus PD could use to qualify. The Arnold Rifle and Pistol Club located in Barnhart is approximately eight miles. That's about fourteen minutes in light traffic. From the proposed location of this range, it offers annual law enforcement memberships with the highest only costing sixteen hundred dollars for an entire department. This annual membership allows for more than twenty range days a year and is for departments, covers departments that are more than ten times the size of Festus. When residents began building homes near Arnold Rifle and Pistol Club, they signed waivers acknowledging their proximity to the gun range. They had the opportunity to decide if they wanted to live somewhere with that level of noise. The residents around the proposed gun range will not have that option. I believe these are factors which should be taken into consideration before the range proposal moves forward. It concerns me that this has already moved to a vote with so many unanswered questions, options left unexplored, and no public notice. I thank you again for your time and hope you take this into consideration during your deliberation of this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Gwen Mercer.
Hi. Um, okay, public speaking is not my strength, so bear with me. Good afternoon. My name is Gwen Mercer. I'm a resident of Festus. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to start by saying that I'm in a law enforcement family. I'm a police wife. I appreciate and um, understand the Festus Police Department and their need for her continued firearms training. That being said, I feel very strongly that this location is not a good fit for the residents of Festus, and it runs counter to the community development that's happening in the Crichts Park. Um, we moved to Festus because we fell in love with everything it had to offer. We love the small town feel and the amenities. We love the people and our wonderful neighbors. But what we love most of all is the proximity to nature. Since living here for the last three years, we've enjoyed the wildlife that we experience in our own yard and the Crichts Park down the street. Um, these factors were essential in choosing this area to live, and we consider them integral parts of our daily life. We feel very blessed to experience the peace and quiet of our neighborhood. The impact of hearing rapid, regular gunfire in our yard would have a significant decrease in our quality of life. We have invested thousands of dollars into our home in hopes of turning it into our forever home. We love our neighbors and neighborhood, and we don't want to leave. Having a gun range next to our neighborhood would be devastating. And then I'd like to quickly share some information that we gathered while researching this proposal. Similar to what Michael said, outdoor gun ranges produce significant noise that can be heard for a few miles. The average drop in property value after a range added is up to four percent per resident. It is uncommon practice to add a gun range even up for private police usage next to existing residential areas or recreational park. Of the municipalities that have added police exclusive gun ranges in Missouri, you can Google and see thousands of complaints, news articles, and lawsuits. Historically, other gun ranges exist in areas nearby where noise has been grandfathered in prior to rezoning to build residential communities as population has expanded. The city of Festus has recently approved an over one million dollar development of the splash pad at the Crichts Park. This is a significant financial investment in the community to continue creating family-friendly attractions at the park. People do not want their children to play near gunfire. The animal shelter in the park houses vulnerable animals that are fragile. These animals require handling and conditioning to reduce their stress and anxiety and make them adoptable. Adding in a tremendous sound of gunfire is an unnecessarily cruel thing to do on caged animals. Homeowners have chosen this area because it's quiet, because of proximity to nature, and whether it's in their own backyard or the Crichts Park nearby, homeowners are taxpaying citizens that deserve the full enjoyment of their property free from excessive noise pollution. There is no chance that this gun range won't impact the quality of life, and the other ranges with complaints can serve as a case study supporting this. The park and the areas surrounding the park are home to hundreds of different bird species that use this area for nesting and migration. Homes in this area range from the low two hundred thousands to up to two point six million dollars with the home behind me selling last year for one point six million dollars. Property values would be negatively impacted. There is an incredibly negative precedent set by communities that have added gun ranges to residential areas, even law enforcement-only gun ranges, and I would hate to see this happen to our area. Many of these towns are in lawsuits from residents that's been years and years, regardless of whatever promises are being made currently about the proposed gun range and its usage limitations by Festus Police only and certain weapons only. These agreements do not seem to last long once ranges are opened. Cities view opening up these ranges as an opportunity to recoup the expenses of building them. Eventually, other gun ranges have been opened up for use by local law enforcement departments that want to shoot closer. Even the Grandview Missouri Department, which has numerous noise complaints, eventually opened up for public usage a few days a week, which was justified because it was developed using public funds. Many other departments do their qualifications at the Arnold Rifle and Pistol Club, similar to what Michael said. It seems unclear how we could reasonably justify the expensive building a range that would need to be engineered, would require an environmental impact study to be conducted by engineers, attorneys, and environmental scientists, and negatively impact thousands of taxpaying residents for the department the size of Festus. In conclusion, I strongly oppose the building of any type of firearm facility near any residential area in Festus. I would support this project in an industrial area, a more rural area, further from parks or residencies, or cost sharing with De Soto to improve their currently shared range facility. Um, Festus is growing and continues to be a family-first destination with the development of features like the barn and the splash pad. Festus has clearly communicated that the park and the neighborhoods nearby are meant for families to enjoy nature and outdoor activities. The proposal of an outdoor gun range and the noise it will generate is a clear conflict with Festus' continued community development in the area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joseph, Joseph Schneider.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I've got a handout. Can I approach? Or how do I give it to you all?
Give it to Jim here on the end, and he will pass it around to us.
My name's Joe Schneider. I live on Blue Ridge Trace. Been here close to thirty years. First off, thanks for your time. Thank you for this time to speak. And I know this is a police training range that's up for discussion here, and I want to thank the police. I, I know if I was a policeman, I would uh, I'd be out there every day if I could. I mean, when your life depends on something, I would definitely be taking that seriously and getting as much training as I could and shooting. I one hundred percent support the facility. My concern is not safety. I, I know, I know our police department knows how to keep us safe at this range. My concern is noise and the close proximity of that noise to my neighborhood and the park. The, the uh, handout that I gave shows, shows my neighborhood with distances uh, to our streets. Um, that neighborhood just down below Blue Ridge Trace was about a hundred and seventy-seven homes, I believe. So, I mean, we got two hundred homes within five hundred feet or a thousand feet of, of where this range is going to be. So um, once again, my, my total, my total concern here is just noise and how it's going to affect the wildlife, and it's just so peaceful down there that I'm concerned that that's gonna, that's gonna change. If there was a way to do an indoor facility, I, I would be all in. And, and if it were a way to silence it, I don't know the expenses for that, but uh, that, that location wouldn't bother me at all. It's one hundred percent noise. Most municipalities are just concerned about putting in a pickleball court for noise. And here we are. I'm thinking, I'm up here just trying to fight for my life not to have a gun range within a thousand feet of my house. That's all I got. Thanks a bunch.
Thank you. Moving right along. We move on to bids. Selection of urban planning consultant.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, um, presented here this evening for your consideration is uh, one of two packages, uh, responses that we received to our request for qualifications, request for proposals to produce an annexation study with analysis and planning consistent with state statutes, uh, county requirements, the city's municipal code, uh, and other related policies and procedures for the city. Uh, we did receive two, uh, the I five group, uh, for fifty-six thousand dollars and from PGAV for seventy-one thousand, uh, five hundred dollars. We did set aside in, uh, under capital outlay, uh, in this year's fiscal year budget, uh, one hundred thousand dollars for these services. The recommendation is to select the I five group for the urban planning services and then to approve the ordinance later on in the meeting tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion? I will entertain a motion to approve the bid of fifty-six thousand dollars to the I five group for urban planning consultant. So moved. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next bid we have is for the land clearing and berm construction for the proposed shooting range. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. Um, we have, in their budget preliminarily, we went out for um, the possibility of building our own shooting range. I understand, um, the residents' concerns. Everybody agrees that it is something that is needed, but nobody necessarily wants it in their backyard, and I, I fully understand that. Um, I've been approached with a couple of different things. Is there other locations? This is about the most rural place that we could look at putting something like this that the city currently owns. If we were to go out and try to find land somewhere else to build this, then it would have to run into different things. We would have to purchase the land. We would have to annex that into the city in order for it to be a city-owned gun range. And that would be additional expenses also. The expense that we have are the bid we got, we got several bids ranging from anywhere from twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars up to two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Ultra excavation came in at twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. That was who we would recommend. Um, somebody, one of the speakers tonight brought up a um, surface danger zone analysis. That is an option that they offered. If that's something that you all would want, that could be added on for a cost not to exceed twenty-three thousand, four hundred and forty additional dollars from what we have currently got. With the map that the gentleman held, handed out with the different distances to the surrounding residents, what that doesn't show is about the eighty-five foot hillside that is on the back of the fifteen-foot berm that we presented um, to be built. So not only is there a fifteen-foot earthen berm that we're shooting into, there's approximately an eighty-five-foot tall hill to serve as a backdrop above that also before anything else would take place, and that's part of why we chose the location that we are at. It's on the westernmost city limits of the city currently. We can't, like I said, we can't get much more rural than where it currently is. Some concerns were expressed as far as other agencies using it. If you do so choose to allow us to build this range, that would be something that we could bring before you, before any other agency is allowed to use it. You would be able to decide if we're going to allow one other agency, two other agencies, whether you're going to say however many agencies we choose, or if you want us to bring each one of those individually, we will do whatever you wish as far as answering to that part of it for letting other people use the range. The majority of the time our range will be used is between nine in the morning until probably about one in the afternoon is when we're normally done. We're manned, we mandated to qualify at least once a year for post. We mandate our officers qualify at least three times a year with live fire and two more times a year with virtual training through the use of a fast machine and our Vertre machine up at the college. Taking several different things into consideration, we feel this is the best location to put this that the city currently owns. We did go out today, um, just kind of as a, an experimental type thing. I positioned officers, and this is um, a fine gentleman brought this to my attention and probably be a good thing to do. We stationed one officer at the entrance to Bailey's, um, or in Bailey Station on Iron Mountain by the cul-de-sac, which is the closest point in Bailey Station to where the range is going to be. We had an officer sit up at Blue Ridge Trace entrance, and then we had one officer sit at the entrance to where the proposed range is going to be, right at West Ridge where the old wastewater treatment facility was. Had them roll down their windows, record on their phones while we fired three shots at a safe distance into the ground. Then we repeated the process with their windows up, and when the windows were up, none of them could hear a single shot. It was, granted, that was a pistol round. It wasn't the rifles. But none of them with their windows up in those three locations could hear the gunshot at all. With the windows down, the highest decibel level that there was was fifty-three decibels at the entrance to Blue Ridge Trace. Normal conversation is fifty-eight to sixty decibels. A normal toilet flushing, they say, is seventy decibels. So while there is a little bit of a noise there, and obviously this was one person only shooting three rounds, it would be a little bit louder than that. That's the type of noise that would be traveling into those neighborhoods. I do have the videos. If any of you would like to see the videos, the one with West Ridge, while you can hear the sound on your phone, but when we tried to transfer it to where it play on the computer, the uh, sound wouldn't show up for some reason. So I've got that one on my phone if anybody would like to see that. But if we show Blue Ridge Trace, that was the most noisy one. We can show you how loud that was with him sitting in his car at the entrance of the subdivision.
Hey, uh, chief. Go ahead. How many people would be at this shooting range when that happens? Like shooting their pistols, shooting their rifles? We talking like one officer every now and then, or a bunch of officers shooting?
Whenever we have a range day, we typically have about ten officers at the range at a time, ten to twelve. Um, we divide them up into platoons. Um, actually, I get, I take that back. It'd probably be about twelve to fourteen, depending on the number on that side of the platoon, because we shoot with A platoon and we shoot with B platoon, just because they will do one of the training. We have to have guys working the road. We can't do it all in one day. So theoretically, we would probably have six to eight days a year that we would be out there shooting currently. And couple of those days, it was just the admin guys or before people shooting. Um, if we divided it up just into two, the most we would have is fifteen shooting per day.
Okay, and then the other thing, because like I said, I know it doesn't affect me or Kevin or Mike Cook, but Jim lives over in that area naturally. And all the West Ridge, like he said, and the Blue Ridge and, and Bailey Station, all that. I've had, yeah, I've gotten a lot of complaints, just, you know, like he said, like Joe said, you know, the noise. There's no way to build an indoor range because that's a flood plain, right?
We couldn't build one there, no, because of the situation. You can't build a structure of that sort where this was going to be. We would have to find additional land somewhere else in order to build an indoor range.
What, any, if we would find a place to build it, what is something like that would be cost?
I, sir, I haven't even begun to look into that because it would be way more than what we could afford.
Well, I mean, yeah, I didn't know if there's a joint way, like you said, a bunch of departments going in cities or to make a drive, I mean, a, a shooting range, but um,
I don't know that any other agencies would have the budget to go in on something together like that also. Plus, then you run in, it, it would be a whole lot more than what we're proposing to do here.
And I understand that, but I mean, I, I, like probably other council people, I've gotten a lot of feedback on this, and unfortunately.
These, these things always do, you know? Like I said, everybody agrees that it is something that is needed, but nobody wants it close to them, and I can understand that.
Right, and like I said, with not living on that side, yeah, but I gotta think of all the people that do live over there, and like he said, with the park, kids being there, with the, every, more and more people are going to be there with the barn and everything else. I know it might not be at some of those times, but still people are going to, the feedback is what is really coming out on this one. So um,
Would you like to hear the, would you like to hear the video or just?
Oh, it's, it's not, yeah, from what they've all, yeah, that ain't going to matter to them at all. It's the fact that a shooting range is there. That's, it doesn't matter if how low it is or what. It's multiple people constantly shooting, and that's what they're um, having to put up with and listening like they, that's just a few of the people that's, I've heard a lot more people complain that they don't want to have to listen to that. They, they love the area. They, it's what they are here for. I don't know if it would detour, deter a bunch of people or, I'm not sure. Not being close to something like that, I don't know how I'd feel, but I'm just, I gotta stick up for all the people that's been coming to me, and I'm sure other ones have gotten the same response. So, but that's why I wanted to find out from you, just out some different possibilities, just because I, like everybody says, we all know we need it, but at the same time, the, the, and um,
In response to some of their questions, we, we could continue to use the De Soto. We could. We used to have a thing at Arnold Rifle and Pistol, but with De Soto, they're getting so many agencies using their range, it's hard to schedule time. A lot of times to get our guys down there on what would be our normal training days to where we don't have to pay officers overtime in order to go down and use that range because of other agencies wanting to use it here and there. But I would like you to just listen to the one was.
Let's listen to it, then I got some.
This is Blue Ridge Trace, sitting right at the entrance. Correct. That's loud as it is.
And their Bailey Station on the back cul-de-sac?
Yes, the back cul-de-sac, which is. I'm sorry, but my captain just filmed the steering wheel. And just to add also, as we were leaving after that, we stopped and talked to different people. We stopped and talked to a couple that was walking right by, kind of in the road right there around where the parks, the old Parks Building was. And my officer just rolled his window down, saying, hey, we got a report of shots fired. Did you guys hear anything? Like, no, we've been out here for fifteen minutes walking. We haven't heard a thing. Um, Captain Pippen, as he was leaving Bailey Station Subdivision, he stopped and talked to a resident right in the area of Bailey Station or Iron Mountain and Bailey School Road. And sitting on her front porch with her dog, he said, hey, did you hear any shots recently? She's like, no, I haven't heard a thing. So it's not going to be a constant barrage of horrible noise that it's being made out to be. While yes, it will be somewhat maybe a little bit of an inconvenience for those sitting outside. Anybody that's inside in the summertime with their doors closed, windows closed, air conditioner on and TV going, will never even know where they're shooting.
Doug, is it, you might have already said this, but are we talking uh, just during the week, not on the weekends?
We don't, we never, all of our qualifications are usually on either a Wednesday or Friday, because that's the two days of the week that everybody works.
Well, the question that I've had, and I'm like Bobby, I've had plenty of phone calls, uh. It is my backyard, but I've had so many phone calls said, uh, would you want this in your backyard? Uh, I can ask you the same thing. You, you wouldn't want it either. And even though that's a pistol shooting, you fire up a machine gun, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna be way louder.
We, we, we never shoot fully automatic. I'll tell you that right there. It's as, we, all of our, we do have three or four fully automatic rifles for the PD. Um, most of those stay in the armory. All the road patrol, they have a semi-automatic AR-15, so it's not likely there'll be machine gunfire going on out there. There could be some rapid fire or sounds like rapid fire when you have five guys. Normally it'd be six guys on the line at one time, so during that five minutes of their qualification run-through, you're going to have five guys up there shooting maybe thirty rounds, forty rounds. And then there'll be a break and going again. And if you ask me, would it bother me? Honestly, sir, stuff like that doesn't bother me, so it wouldn't bother me if it was in my backyard, but that's just my preference.
Well, to me, Doug, it's, and my honest opinion is, it's, it's probably no worse than shooting fireworks. Um, but I get a lot of complaints about that, too. Uh, and then uh, the pistol is going to be the minimum, minimum.
I'll agree with that, yes.
I, I don't know. I think I would like to hear a video with uh, either rifle or shotgun going off because they will be used, I'm sure, a lot during that uh, uh, during the firing, but I, I just don't know what to tell people because I really kind of feel the same way, you know what I mean? But, but it's ridiculous to think that you could go find another piece of ground and build a uh, firing range or shooting range. It's ridiculous. I, I don't know, you know, uh, I don't know the crowd, you know, how crowded it is in DeSoto, so I don't know that. The uh, gun range up in uh, uh, where's that, Imperial? Um, do, do we, do we, does uh, do we have to be a member there, or can we just?
Yes, you would have to be a member to shoot there. We would have to pay for membership there in order to use that range.
Yeah.
Yes, you do it when they're open. We can't do night fire there because they're not allowed to do, to shoot after dark there as part of their regulations. So that's, we do have to qualify once a year at nighttime, just for insurance purposes.
I, I, you know, I understand that um, nobody wants that in their backyard. I, I'm like you. Uh, you know, people are shooting fireworks off a lot of times when they shouldn't be, um, is allowed, absolutely, but you know, what are you going to do? You got, no matter where you move, you know, if you put it on the, the west side of town, the east side, you're going to get opposition, so. I mean, I don't, I don't even know how to answer the questions though that I'm getting the phone calls on, because it's, it's just the uh. You know, I'll say this, do you think anybody that is shooting fireworks off at two AM care about their neighbors? Evidently not, because they do it. But they're also the same kind of people that's calling me going to complain that aren't, that are complaining about this, uh, the shooting range in their backyard. So, so I don't know where I stand.
Could I address something on this?
Absolutely, sir.
What would it cost to put in some soundproofing above where the shot, you know, the shooting's going to be going on? Putting on womanized four before with soundproofing panels?
I would have no idea. I didn't look, I don't, I don't know what you would put to soundproof like that, just because you would have to come. Without it being an indoor range, I don't know you could how, do anything to really soundproof it because of just the omnidirectional sound of the shot ringing out.
I imagine there's a way there someplace. Anything would probably be beneficial.
Yeah, with the right amount of money, we could figure something out, but.
So, so my, my thought is, all the questions that they've brought up, could we make a present, put this on hold, make a presentation, lay it out there, then we vote on it? Because I don't know that it's going to affect wildlife. It is the farthest part up you can get almost without being in the city limits. The ground isn't considered usable park ground. There isn't anything we can do out there because where it's at, and we have over my twenty-some years, we've studied all that. It's a good piece away from the dog kennel. I wish they would have stayed to heard what I heard, but I mean, we, we want to save city, and this is part of what you have to do to have a police department. To, so, I mean, to get a membership, I know that I'm a member Arnold Rifle and Pistol, and it closes one whole part of the range down when we're up there shooting, and we pay good money to be there. Um, but I would like to see a whole presentation, answer all the different questions, lay it all out there, and then that way, we can, we can have a vote on it, and we can delay what we have to vote on tonight. Let them, let them hear what we have to say to each one of their questions. Doug, I wish they would have stayed to heard what he had to say.
I think it's a, it's a big commitment.
I, I don't know what else I could do as far as a presentation, though, sir. What do you want me to put together? I'll be happy to, but I don't know what else I can do.
Each one of the questions, address them in front of, put it on the agenda where they're coming to hear.
I, I think we would drive, I've tried to address each one of their questions, and I'm sorry they didn't stick around to hear that, sir, but I'm.
Then there's a good chance it's going to fail. So that's, that's, that's my thought. Uh, I am not totally against it, but I just think maybe you know, like, like. I mean, we have an ordinance says what decibels you can allow in the city. I live by fifty-five, Bobby lives by fifty-five. Uh, you know. But I, I just think maybe all in one package where everybody can see it, and then we can go about it. Just, just my thought.
Doug, one thing I was going to say, too, is uh, I don't necessarily understand the terrain of, of sound, because, you know, we've built houses before right there on fifty-five, and depending on where you at, where you're at on the level of fifty-five, uh, that's night and day difference, so.
Sound normally travels down valleys. They don't travel up over hills very well. So the majority of the sound is going to be actually directed more towards Bailey Station than it is going to be towards West, our West Ridge and um, Bailey Station, or not Bailey Station, um, Blue Ridge Trace, just because of the topography. Normally, like you say, I could sit on my back deck on the Saturday night and listen to the Peavly Racetrack, you know, just because it travels down the valley. But, you know, that's part of living in close proximity of other people.
And I think that's an important thing, you know, like the uh, the location of that property is, I mean, it's a big step off of uh, a highway there, you know, or not a, but uh.
Old A.
The old A.
Yeah, it's about eighty-five feet to ninety feet, depending on where you measure, below where a highway runs through there on a topographical map.
Well, I, I'm like Kevin, I, you know, I know you've put together, or you, you have good answers for everything that was brought up, but uh, I think it would be important for people to hear that video and, and actually address uh, the terrain. Um, because yes, uh, Blue Ridge Trace is the closest, but you could hardly hear it from uh, Bailey Station. And that's, that's pretty much of, you know, uh, constant grade to get to Bailey Station, where Blue Ridge Trace is way up here. So, I mean, that's my thought, but I think we definitely need to. I'm also like Kevin, I, I don't know that it's going to pass because there's just too many, too much opposition for us, but that's my feelings.
I, I agree with Jim as well. We need to hear what else is being, granted, it's going to be five or six officers at a time. And I a hundred and fifty percent understand the value of range time. It has to be muscle memory. It has to be, we can't, we can't mimic a live fire situation. But we all know that those things exist. Saying, I get that you can't have night fire. Well, that's a problem. I get that we can't get the range days when we need to get, I understand that as well. But then we have to counterbalance that with the citizens, the wildlife, and all those different pieces and parts that go into this, because it's not just a, a one-off. So I would like to know, you can't have night fire over there, but you know, what does that cost as well as additional? Can we hear what it would sound like to have a few more officers firing at one time? Plus, the, the shotgun, the rifle, whatever it is that you're it, because at least that way we can say we did our due diligence, and then we can make a, a fair decision one way or another.
Part, part of the problem with that runs into um, where I was able to shoot the pistol without a berm was something, but if I'm starting to shoot a firearm like a rifle or something else without a safe backdrop, it's going to turn into there, too. I can't have six guys down there shooting weapons into the ground without a safe backdrop. So there's no real way that I can recreate that for you guys to listen to. Um, there's, I don't know what else I can put together to bring before you, so if it's something you guys aren't interested in, I guess, I, I don't know what else to say at this point. I'll do whatever you request for me to do. I'll try to do everything I can to try to get this to go through, but at, at this point in time, I would need some direction about exactly what you're wanting me to do, so I can bring it back to you.
That, that's a good point, because like you said, you, none of us are going to know the effect of six people shooting pistols or rifles or whatever it may be the right way, and I guess if you could come back, let us know what, what the cost is at Arnold, Peavly, DeSoto, whatever it is. That might have to, we might have to stick with that option, unfortunately.
Right now, DeSoto doesn't charge us anything to use theirs. It's just trying to get in there. Um, like I said, we, it does us no good to try to get an Arnold Rifle and Pistol because we can't do one of our qualifications up there, just so that eliminates them as a part of it. Um, we used to use Windsor Rod and Gun Club because we had somebody that was a member there, but it's to the point we can't get in there anymore either. So obvious, right now, our only option besides trying to build our own is using DeSotos, so.
I mean, is it, is it much to join Windsor or to Peavly or whatever?
Well, Windsor Rod and Gun Club has a waitlist of about five years to get a member in there um, to where you can, you access to that. So that is kind of out. Like I said, Arnold Rifle and Pistol is out because you can't shoot at night. Um.
I know Saint, was it Saint Louis County goes out there off of forty-four, but Antir there, but um.
That's, that's not practical as far as, we're, we're trying to do something local to where our guys, we can have our own control.
I know, but where's Jefferson County go?
Right now, part of theirs, they, we're using the range out off of Hillsboro, but they've closed that range. Um, I think the majority of them, they use DeSoto right now also. I'm not sure exactly where else they go.
I didn't know if to piggyback with some other agency. That's why I was.
It's right by their wastewater treatment plant on Highway P.
Oh, okay.
Would be possible to uh, use some of these funds towards DeSoto down there and uh, do something with.
The, the problem we run into is not, is the control or access to the range is why we're trying to build our own. It's not going to do us any good to throw funding to DeSoto when they're not asking for any funding. Um, that's not going to help us out in that aspect of it. It's not like we can build their range bigger or anything else or on that, so. We're kind of at their mercy when we can get on their range.
But we've been able to do this in the past, right?
Yes, we have. We're just, we're trying to be, we're trying to be progressive. We're trying to have more control over what we can do as a police department.
I, I completely, as everyone else has said here, completely back the police. I voted for everything that you have ever wanted. Um, and I understand that there is definitely a need for this, um, but with, I think, with Festus being promoted as a family-friendly area, I mean, with red barns, with splash pads, with Crites Park, with proximity to that, uh, with quiet, with peace, with people moving here because of the, because of the, the quietness of it. Um, and pistols are one thing, um, but you know, three shots are, are one thing out of a pistol, but I don't know how many uh, rifle shots would be fired. I mean, I just, I would, I would love to say that I would like to support this, but I, I can't because of because of noise, because of the animals that Kevin was talking about. I mean, there's just a lot, just a lot going on.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid for twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to ultra excavating for land clearing and berm construction. We do not have a motion. We do not have a motion. This request is dead for lack of a motion. We'll have to figure out something, Doug.
Thank you, sir.
Can I make a motion that we table this for getting a little bit more together on it?
When we get to, when we get to the ordinance.
One second.
When we get there. Ordinances and resolutions. Tonight, we have ordinance forty-eight thirteen on the agenda. Would the clerk please read ordinance forty-eight thirteen for the first time?
Bill number forty-eight thirteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute an agreement with the I-5 Group for Urban Planning Services, incorporating said agreement as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-eight thirteen is now open for discussion. Can I have a staff report? We've already went over it in, in the work session. Is there any questions about bill forty-eight thirteen? Is there any council member who wants this bill to be placed on the, the uh, for the next meeting? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-eight thirteen for second time title only.
So moved.
Motion's been made, and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-eight thirteen for the second time?
Bill number forty-eight thirteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute an agreement with the I-5 Group for Urban Planning Services, incorporating said agreement as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight thirteen has passed. Next, we have Resolution forty-eight thirteen point five. Would the clerk please read the resolution? Would the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution number forty-eight thirteen and a half, a resolution of the Council of the City of Festus, demonstrating the city's commitment to reduce violent crime within the city as a part of the state's Blue Shield Program.
Resolution number forty-eight thirteen point five is now open for discussion, which we've already had a staff report in work session. So we won't need that. Is there any further discussion on that? Uh, resolution? If not, do I have a motion to approve, approve resolution number forty-eight thirteen point five?
So moved.
Motion's been made. And seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Resolution forty-eight thirteen point five has passed. We now have bill forty-eight fourteen on the agenda. Would the clerk please read bill forty-eight fourteen for the first time?
Bill number forty-eight fourteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Joker's paving and contracting. For the North Mill Street improvements, incorporating said contracts and documents as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-eight fourteen is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
The North Mill Street project, improvement project is a federally funded STP project, which is up to eighty percent reimbursable. Bids were submitted on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four with Joker's paving and contracting Inc. being the low bidder with six hundred and sixty. Seven thousand three hundred and fourteen and forty cents. The project begins at the intersection of North Mill Street and Main Street and concludes at the intersection of Scenic Drive and Cedar Heights. The project includes a mill and overlay, curb removal and replacement, full depth pavement repair, storm sewer structure replacement and street lights.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions or discussions about bill forty-eight fourteen?
I think this is just another one of the, uh, main thoroughfares that goes through town that. Will, uh, provide like a solid backbone for our community as far as lighting, uh.
I'm sorry.
Cedar Heights. We have, we have some of these.
She doesn't even know that her house is a laydown yard for.
Is there, is there any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to accept that bid.
Second it.
Trying to.
This is the ordinance. Oh, this is the ordinance.
Yeah, sorry, I put it, I put everything into the ordinance file and it didn't get split out between bid and ordinance.
Okay.
And so all the attachments are under the ordinance.
That's fine. Is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-eight fourteen for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-eight fourteen for the second time?
Bill number forty-eight fourteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Joker's paving and contracting for the North Mill Street improvements. Incorporating said contracts and documents as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight fourteen has passed. We also have bill forty-eight fifteen on the agenda. Would the clerk please read bill forty-eight fifteen for the first time?
Bill number forty-eight fifteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Joker's paving and contracting for the second street parking lot improvements. Incorporating said contracts and documents as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-eight fifteen is now open for discussion. Could I have the staff report, please?
Yes, sir. The South Second Street Parking Lot was designed and received bids on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five with Joker's paving and contracting Inc. being low bidder. At one million seventy thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty cents. This project will replace an overlay payment. Remove and install new sidewalk, install new lighting and update pavement marking. Uh, the inspection will be done by city personnel and material testing will be done through Cochran.
Bill forty-eight fifteen is now open for discussion.
That street then will officially be closed and that's where the handicap accessible will go up?
Yes, sir.
And that'd be sometime this summer?
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty, forty-eight fifteen for the second time in title only. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-eight fifteen for the second time?
That's okay.
Bill number forty-eight fifteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Joker's paving and contracting for the second street parking lot improvements. Incorporating said contracts and documents as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight fifteen has passed. Next, we have bill forty-eight sixteen on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-eight sixteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute an agreement. With ultra excavating for shooting range construction, incorporating said agreement as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-eight sixteen is now open for discussion. I believe we have had a staff report already. Motion has been made to table this ordinance.
I'd like to say, I think that, uh, the folks that came in, uh, did a good, you know, representation of what they felt about this, but I think Doug did too. And I think it'd be good to get this tabled again so we can all.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to table this ordinance. Until further notice.
So mayor, we, we're not voting yes or no then?
No.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Bill forty-eight sixteen will be tabled. New business. We have a request from the Chamber of Commerce for Twin City. For Twin City Days, September the sixth.
It's also for Main Street Trick or Treat Spooktacular, October twenty-fifth and the Christmas Parade, December first. It's for all three of their events this year.
Okay, the Chamber of Commerce has submitted all three events. The, uh. Twin City Days. The Trick or Treat Spooktacular. And the Christmas Parade. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. All three events will take place. We also have a temporary liquor license for Le Chance Vineyards. For May the fourth, twenty twenty-five for the Art Walk. Chief, you have any input?
We have no objections.
We've done this before several times.
I believe so, yes.
Yes. I will entertain a motion to approve the temporary liquor, liquor license for Le Chance Vineyards LLC for the Art Walk.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Do you notify them?
Yes.
And last but not least, we have the approved audited financial statements for the period ending nine thirty of twenty twenty-four. I will entertain a motion to approve the audit financial statements for that period.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. We have accepted that audit. Old business. We have no old business. Councilman Boyer.
Yes, sir. I, uh. I'd like to thank the, uh, city residents that voted for me and represent them in Ward One again. I feel we got a good group of council people here and I'm proud to be part of it. Uh, look like things are going well out at West City Park with, uh, the barn and the splash pad, so looking good there. And that's about all I have, sir.
All right, thank you. Councilman Weiner.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Dennis.
It's good to be sitting up here. We're in the couple of years, uh. Um, I think we've made huge gains over the last two years. We've, we've worked on this water and we're, we're continuing to get that fixed, our streets. Uh, like to see some more chatter about new firehouse or, uh, property for a firehouse or. Or, uh, something, uh. But, uh, like I said, we've, we've got more work to do and, um, I think we're doing a pretty good job of it. Um, I hope we can resolve this issue with the range, uh, to where it'll work out for everybody. It might be a small price to pay to have a well-trained. Police department and a little bit of sacrifice, a little bit of noise, you know, as long as we're tearing a place down, so. Do our homework and see if we can come back with some sort of resolution, resolution and it'll work for everybody. So that's all, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Templeton.
I am definitely glad to be back for two more years to see projects move forward down the path. So that's always exciting. And I kinda echo what Kevin said. I'm anxious to see what else is gonna come at us with the fire department, with the range and all these types of things. They're not always easy decisions by any means. There's always a lot of. Other factors to consider, but I think that's why we sit up here. So that's all.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Vins.
Congratulations keeping all of you here. Good counsel we have here. Very proud to serve on it with everybody. And it's like everybody said, I'd like to do our best to figure out what we can. You know, do for the police and fire and, and every, make everybody happy. I know it's tough, but we, we do what we can. That's it, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Tenon. Uh, just congratulations, everybody. Um.
I feel the same. I'm just gonna say did, uh, this, everybody just spoke about the fire department, shooting range and, uh, other things that were. Kind of, uh, thinking about. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I also would like to extend my congratulations to, uh, our councilmen who have been re-elected. We, uh, we do have a good council. I think we all work together pretty well, actually real well. And, uh. I've got two more years left. And then that's it. So there are some things, don't print that in the paper, by the way. We have some things that I'd like to see us get done and, uh. We'll continue to work hard to do the best for our citizens. I appreciate the police department, the officers that work the street, the firemen that. Answer the calls. We're lucky to have everything that we have and I would like to say. Fortunately, we have one of the best city administrators in this state, which has kept things. Going. Greg and I work together real well. So having said that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.